I'd like to call to order the Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, August 12th at 7:05 PM. And tonight, we're gonna have a presentation from Bob from EDC. And floor is yours, Bob.
Okay. Well, I guess I know how U.S. Attorney General Bob feels like in front of testifying in front of Congress.
We're kinder.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we all know who the zoning board is and what they do. Same with the planning board. Selectmen, town engineer, building commissioner, police fire chief. What not many people know is who the EDC is. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I would like to at least explain what the EDC is, what we do, who we are, and what we do.
Go right ahead.
The EDC consists of five members. Luke McNeil, Carol Gogolinski, Paul Peterson, Brad Maltz, and myself. We are a volunteer commission responsible for the development of economic activity in Douglas. Hence our name, the Economic Development Commission. Some people do know who we are. Right after Prop 2 and 1/2, I joined the EDC. Actually, the real story on that is Bill Cundiff forced me into the EDC.
Was that right after Prop 2 and 1/2? Prop 2 and 1/2?
It was, yeah. Right after Prop 2 and 1/2.
I didn't realize that.
I went into Bill's office complaining, and he says, "I have a job for you." And it's been all downhill since. I thought I retired, but I guess I didn't. Within a short time, the EDC received some real nasty emails after Prop 2 and 1/2. They accused us of doing nothing. They accused us that we need to attract business to increase our commercial tax base. I mean, there were some nasty emails in there. At that time, I just retired from 33 years in airlines, and my first thought was, "I can't shake these unruly passages that are following me home." I have a quick question for any of you. Have any of you been on the Lackey Dam exit, exit 4 or Route 46 lately? Have you noticed a long line of cars heading for this building to knock our doors down to build business in Douglas?
Oh, yeah. He's tripping all over them.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that line doesn't exist.
That would've been a problem.
It's non-existent. Business doesn't come to Douglas. We have to go to them. We have to go to them. It's a fact of life that the majority of businesses will not approach the town or the EDC to locate or relocate in Douglas. Some will, but most won't. We've had a few inquiries. They approach us. Bill has sent some people my way. Matt Wojcik has sent people our way. We investigate. But for the most part, they're small, they're not big ones. You have to go after the big fish. Usually, a business does not come to you. You have to go to them. The EDC must be proactive and reach out to them with an attractive offer, or at the very least, a plan. Something that's a tough sell. And it's a tough sell in Douglas because our infrastructure is not there. We don't have, for instance, I just talked to a developer yesterday up on the top end of Davis Street. His first question, "Do you have water, sewer, gas up there?" You know, my answer, "No." But we're working on it, so... And we don't have water, sewer, gas in that area. We need to upgrade a lot of systems. Our infrastructure is not there right now to support a lot of business that we can have. But we're working on it. We'll get there, but it'll take time. Individual landowners could attract business, but most won't. Abutting landowners will not get together to form an attractive assemblage. In reality, they're actually against each other. They compete with each other because they want that one nugget of small business, and the heck with their neighbor when they can get in on their property. So they're actually in competition with each other. So the EDC must be proactive in assembling properties, talking to abutting landowners, getting them together to form a much larger and attractive assemblage so an offer can be made to attract business. Carol Gogolinski and I did that, just did that, two years ago. We assembled 185 acres behind Granitech. We talked to actually six landowners. It would've been 205 acres, but one landowner, let's just say that's another story for another day. We assembled 185 acres, got everybody on board, and that property is being marketed. And I would say that in the very near future, they'll be paying big dividends on that 185 assemblage. Big dividends. For you Trump fans out there, we'll call it huge dividends. I guess now I have to say, "I approve this message." I can't speak for past EDC commissions. I've only been here for three years, and I have to be very careful how I phrase this as I don't want to send you the wrong impression, and I don't want to imply any blame whatsoever. But very little was accomplished as far as large projects. Now, in their defense, this is due to the fact that the town finances the last 20 years were in pretty good shape. You were on the finance committee. You weren't looking for money. We had it. We weren't floating in it, but the town was in pretty good financial shape, not dire shape.
Kept ourselves small and lived within our budget.
Right. We lived within our means, and it was a comfortable budget. There was no need for the EDC to go out and look for big projects. There was no need for it. There was no need to go out and get assemblage of properties. Prop 2 and 1/2 changed that, and it changed it overnight.
I need to talk to you about Prop 2 and 1/2. I think you're misstating one thing, and I just want to explain it to you since I have been in finances for a while. I think you're using Prop 2 and 1/2 as when we passed the override.
Right.
Okay. I couldn't figure that out. I'm going, "Wait a minute. He hasn't been on there for that long. What happened?"
That was three years ago, wasn't it?
So, how to explain that, Bob, is when the override passed. Prop 2 and 1/2 went into effect, I believe, in 1981, and that's when the cities and towns voted that they didn't want the entire property tax in the town to go up more than 2 and 1/2%.
Right.
We had it. We overrode it three years ago in the town of Douglas.
That is what I'm referring to as our override three years ago.
The proper term would be the override.
The override.
Otherwise, you're gonna confuse me because it confused me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for the correction.
Yeah, you're welcome.
But that is what I'm referring to, and that's the next week I was in Bill's office, and then it was all downhill from there. That's okay. I won't hold it against you. I've been actually having fun. Prop 2 and 1/2, the override, changed things quickly. During the past several years, I have approached many businesses to get them to relocate to Douglas. Sutton attracted Prime Meadows from Worcester in his very fashion. Prime Meadows, as you know, they were a metal fabricator processor, and they were looking to expand. Their property taxes were going up in Worcester, so Sutton just jumped in and said, "Hey, we've got a perfect piece of property for you in an industrial park on Gilmore Drive. We're running gas up there. They got a Massworks grant to run natural gas up there." And Prime Meadows is now relocated. They're in the process of building on Gilmore Drive. A nice tax incentive for the town of Sutton. But they do processing, assembly inside and outside a building. Now, keep that thought in mind because I will be coming to that. I was negotiating with a large cannabis greenhouse cultivator similar to the proposed facility in Charlton. Now, the one in Charlton, they were gonna plan on building three campuses. We were in the running for one of them. And in the example in Charlton was $20 million in five years of tax revenue. That's a pretty chunk, good chunk of change. That's how much money is in these, some of these cannabis grow facilities. That fell through the cracks for reasons beyond my control. Zoning issues usually pop up. Sometimes it's like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. Fred Hudnack's Lot 16515, which is 130 acres of that Project 185, half of that property was residential, half was zoned industrial. Well, you can't have a company come in, pay for the whole thing, and only build on half of it. So the EDC got involved in that, and we pushed through a rezone on that. That passed through one of the town meetings. I don't know if it was annual or special. Doesn't matter. It just, it passed, and now it's all zoned industrial. That will be paying big dividends here pretty soon. You don't know if your zoning bylaws work until you attempt to negotiate with outside businesses. If the EDC is not active, the current zoning bylaws are just fine. They're not truly tested. They're just sitting there. The past few years that I've been in the weeds with these businesses, you quickly discover that what worked many years ago does not work well now. A prime example is the one we'll be discussing tonight. Manufacturing use, assembly, processing inside a building. I believe that was formed back in 2004 when we had a salvage company doing business in Douglas. And they would take apart buildings, process wood, which contained possibly lead, lead paint, asbestos. So that's where the wording came from, "conducted inside a building." Well, here we go, 20 years later, and now it's hurting us. So that's why the EDC has sponsored a zoning bylaw amendment. The reason zoning bylaw amendments become necessary were each individual town zoning bylaws have morphed into the most current document, adapting the language to fit their specific needs, situations, then making cost corrections as conflicts surface. I spent the last three nights looking at a lot of other town zoning bylaws, from Sturbridge to Natick, far north as Wales and Lunenburg, just looking at their zoning bylaws. And it's from A to Z. No two towns are alike. I kind of like ours. Some people don't, but I kind of like our format. I was telling Bill that today. I think we have a nice format. The table that I passed out, we're the only town with a nice table. You know, a picture's worth a thousand words. You can go into an item, go across, and it's there. I looked at Sturbridge. Sturbridge has commercial, Chapter 7; industrial, Chapter 8; residential, Chapter 9. And I mean, you've got to go through each chapter, and it's cumbersome. And I spent the last, up to 2 o'clock last night, looking at Sturbridge, and I'm just shaking my head going, "I appreciate what we have in our green book right now."
Are you aware of the reasoning why that was done that way?
No, but I'm glad somebody did do it that way.
Well, we had really the preeminent person who works with town and zoning.
Bumbrowski?
Bumbrowski.
Yeah.
That worked with the town.
I had a chance to meet him, a very knowledgeable man.
Yeah, very. And, you know, he did a pretty good job.
No two town zoning bylaws are the exact same, as I found out. I must admit, I like our format much better than anyone else's, but that doesn't mean our zoning bylaws are perfect. One final comment. Bill Cundiff and I attended a meeting in Sutton last year, last fall, I believe. And there's a proposed two-large warehouse project going on, Mary Bedoin's property. It's directly opposite Pine, Sand, and Gravel on the Uxbridge side. There's an 800,000-square-foot building and a 500,000-square-foot building going on there. Well, Douglas has a little corner of that section. That's why we were invited to this meeting. Our property line crosses 146 with a little wedge into Uxbridge. Most of this project will be in Uxbridge, some in Sutton, some in a little piece, and we're hoping for the building so we get more tax return as opposed to a parking lot in Douglas. And luckily, the building is on our property. As Bill and I sat in that meeting, and the two architects for the two buildings were going back and forth with their to-do list, what they needed, I can honestly say that Sutton and Uxbridge were scrambling. They were writing down things to do to get onto their soon-to-be special town meeting, and Bill and I are just sitting there twiddling our thumbs because our zoning bylaws allowed everything. So in that respect, we had some good zoning bylaws, but they do need tweaking. They need to be updated, and I'll give you some examples later on. I've always said if our zoning laws are lemons, you're gonna make lemonade out of it. And some of these changes or amendments we're trying to make is just gonna make the lemonade sweeter. That's basically all I have as far as what the EDC has been up to, what we do, why there are some changes coming down the road. The big change right now is D1, which if you look on your Page 3 in your pamphlet I passed out to you. D1 is "any manufacturing use, including processing, fabrication, and assembly conducted inside a building." We spent two weeks on where the comma should be and where there is no comma. That's how, that's how much in-depth we got into this thing. Yeah, I think these two gentlemen, I write, are well aware of what we went through, which is meeting after meeting after meeting pounding ahead with town council, like, "How do we read this?" You know, "And how do you interpret it?" The easy way to do this is just make a 1A, and that's what the EDC suggested, and change the word "inside" to "outside," so now we're covered. We can do a lot of projects. Prime Meadows, if you remember what I said, they fabricate and process inside and outside a building. Technically, we could not attract Prime Meadows Douglas with the wording that exists at this minute right now. If we had somebody who wanted to assemble picnic tables outside a building, can't do it. If Solar Wolf had a big array, and they had to assemble panels outside the building, they couldn't do it. So we're kind of handcuffing industry or businesses in one respect, and we can't attract businesses unless we do a minor change here. Hence the reason for the zoning bylaw amendment, which is being in the process right now, which will be tomorrow night at the planning board. The other thing I found out looking through a lot of...
Can I just interject?
Sure.
Just for clarity, it's not exactly the same. So when you look at the district columns, the proposal is not mirroring what's there for...
That's what I was gonna, that was my question.
Inside a building. So the outside of building is only proposed...
In industrial.
Industrial district.
Mm-hmm.
And that's by special permit.
So we can control it.
So it's BA industrial?
Right.
Yep.
Under planning board.
How do I interpret that, the way he described it?
PB.
What's that?
The bylaw that's here now. Because, no. Because the way it's written, it says, "any manufacturing use," comma, "including the other thing." So why is it, this doesn't say it's only inside a building. It says it's including inside.
I agree with you 100%.
We went around and...
No, but I'm just...
Conus.
Thank you.
Because it says, comma, you stop.
Yeah.
And it includes the processing and fabrication and assembly conducted inside a building.
Thank you very much.
There is nothing that says outside a building.
That's my opinion as well.
Well, that's why the comma's there.
Right.
Town council disagrees with the both of us.
Really?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do they...
And when you start going against town council, you're kind of hanging it out there, so...
Did anyone call Mark Bubrowski?
We did. I mean, we relied on our land use council.
Our land use council.
That works with us regularly.
And I did check with an English teacher. She agrees with you guys.
But I do have to say that I believe he was partners with Bubrowski.
Yes, he was.
When Bubrowski did this.
Yes, he was. Well, but if you go back to the original source, there is an intent in that sentence that he wanted to, you know, give to Douglas.
And this has been hammered out over a course of four weeks. Trust me, we...
And this, inside a building. It's not, "Stop. This is one thing. This is one thing." It's all of this.
I'm not following what you mean because it's making us...
Any manufactured use...
Okay.
Including processing, fabrication, and assembly conducted inside a building. That's how I interpret it.
I see.
Okay, so does that mean you can't do it outside a building?
You can't do it outside a building.
It doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't say that.
It's true.
I disagree.
Yeah, I disagree too.
I disagree with that. Says, "any manufacturing use," comma, "including the..." So they included what's going on inside a building.
If you ask 100 people, you get two different answers.
Well, there's people that are, you know, considering work in Douglas and find that sentence concerning to them.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, obviously...
So what kind of, what kind of the people that it's affecting, what's their concern? What are they gonna do outside a building that would be a concern?
They won't, they won't come here, period.
What are they gonna do? What manufacturing are they doing outside a building that we're worried about inside?
Prime Meadows is a perfect example.
Okay. So what do they do? I don't know. I know the name.
Oh, Prime Meadows, they fabricate steel structures. They'll take pieces of metal and make a window frame or structure, clamp it up, and then weld it. They fabricate, they process metal. They're a metal fabricator. If they get really bogged down on work, which they have done in Worcester, they will move their work outside. If the weather's good.
Yeah, I don't know. Why would a, I mean, I guess I'd wonder why Douglas would have, by virtue of someone writing it for us, why that would be part of our bylaws, that it wouldn't be allowed outside? I'm trying to figure out, again, what the purpose of that was. It doesn't make sense.
I think because they put the comma in there, and they, it also includes what goes on inside the building. It doesn't exclude what goes on outside the building.
So the other thing is...
That's how I...
And Bob, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Bob has done a tremendous amount of research with other towns' bylaws.
Right.
And he has portrayed to me that this is not unique language.
It's not?
Unique.
We are the only town that has those last four words, "conducted inside a building." Charlton, I believe, has the exact wording, "stops," period, after assembly. So you can construe that to mean inside or outside. It's not specific. We went specific, I believe, because of the salvage operation. Well, the salvage operation is not here anymore, and it's tying our hands right now. It's hurting us.
I will tell you what I'm gonna guess. I'm gonna guess that Mark Bubrowski probably wrote the Charlton one, too, and that he...
Probably wrote most of them.
Yes, he probably did, because everybody was going to him.
Now, a lot of towns...
Either he refined ours, and ours was after, or ours was before, and he took it out of the ones after.
Or maybe we put it in. I don't know the history of it. A lot of towns do not have this in there. A lot of towns do have "any manufacturing use," period. We put in "processing, fabrication, and assembly." We kind of broke it down a little more, and then we put a restriction on it.
This was written by Mark Bubrowski. I assure you that the townspeople of Douglas did not write stuff into this.
Now, you look at Uxbridge...
We relied on the expert.
It could've been the issue he referred to early with the salvage operation that triggered that.
Maybe.
It's good that he added all these fabrication, assembly, because if he didn't add them, it's prohibited.
Yeah.
If it's not listed here, it's prohibited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In a lot of towns...
You talk about Sutton. Sutton's list is, there's like 50 things on the industrial use. Because they wanted to list every thing.
Everything.
And they wanted to show what zone you could do it in, so...
Now, Uxbridge happens to be the worst. They have nothing listed.
That's not unusual.
I'm gonna keep my mouth shut about that.
Yeah.
I mean, personally, I don't have a problem with doing it outside. I guess the problem I have is that it's such a, it now has drawn attention to itself, all right?
Mm-hmm.
And we know nothing about the project, or projects. It could be two. I don't know. And I'm not used to working that way. And the town, I mean, this area, I don't even know what area you're talking about, actually, for this.
Anywhere.
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 Anywhere. Well, so industrial zones.
Industrial zones.
There's some industrial zones that are close to actually the one that we just changed the zoning to. It's fairly close to residential.
That's why it's special permit, so we have control over it.
But so you have to watch out what they're doing outside that could impact the residential.
That's why it's special permit and not by right.
Right.
Go ahead, Mike.
There's a reason for that.
Yeah.
Bob, on this, and just getting to this piece of paper that you got for the advertisement for tomorrow's meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. I think you just gotta look to see. I seen it on here somewhere. All right. So there's an asterisk after the table, second section, says, "In addition to general special permit criteria, the planning board shall review any such application under landscaping requirements for the property line standards under Section 5.3.3." Is that, what about the site plan review? And the reason why I'm bringing that up is just Pam just mentioned close proximity to residential, and if you're talking a metal fabrication business, that's outside, whether they're using grinders or whatever, noise is gonna be an issue for the abutting neighbors, so they could have some input.
It's either 5.33 or 5.4, the noise, smell, all that stuff.
Oh, they're both in there.
That's the reason that's in there. That's referenced.
Yeah, that I wasn't familiar with those two sections, whether or not that was...
The environmental section of the zone. But site plan review is not in there.
Is there a reason why we don't have site plan review?
If it triggers site plan review, it will trigger site plan review, and there's three thresholds that trigger that. Percent impervious, number of parking spaces, and change of use of 500 square meters or more. So that's, that's there always. So if they trigger site plan review, they'll still have to get site plan review.
Well, I can't assume there's gonna be a building because they wanna work outside the building, so it doesn't necessarily have to have one, but...
The parking room.
Bathrooms.
And everything else. It should trigger, why wouldn't we put in their site plan review so then you would address any noise concerns from the abutting neighbors?
The noise would be under the environmental performance standards.
Okay.
But we wouldn't want to put in site plan review?
This is the environmental performance standards. You've got noise, solid waste, miscellaneous standards, which is lighting, cinders, dust, fumes, gases, odors, smoke, radiation, refuse, other waste materials.
So as part of the special permit process, they would have to meet all of these?
Meet all of these.
Or at least address them, the concerns of abutting neighbors and stuff, correct?
Yes. And like Bill said, three things would trigger the site plan review anyways, just like anything else.
I just want to make sure that you're talking about, especially if it's like a metal fabrication business, that's extremely noisy. I don't know if you did it, but I did it for 16 years, so I have death from doing it. What's that? So I just want to make sure that if we're, wherever the properties may be, like Ginger Howell is over on Davis Street.
Yeah.
Across 116, across the street is industrial.
Right.
So if somebody was up, I don't know if she'd hear it, but somebody along that street, it could bother them. So just to make sure that they have input into...
Right. And there's an industrial section 43 acres off of Monroe Street. It's in the island.
Right.
It's a long, thin piece.
Yeah, they talk about mini storage over there.
We want to keep that special permit so a noisy person can come in there and disturb residences on three sides.
That are all around.
And it's right up against Uxbridge. You'd be affecting residents in Uxbridge as well. So that's why it is special permit, so it can be...
Not to be rude, I'm just concerned.
Well, when I did the 185 acres, I did actually sit down with some of those people in Uxbridge to be good neighbors.
Absolutely.
Quite your own that thing, but for what we're doing here, that's all.
So the, if you wanted to discuss the zoning bylaw amendment, and the revision to that zoning bylaw amendment proposed, I've got a timetable here, if you're interested, if you wanna follow me through on, from day one, how we progressed through this.
Does it have all the blood, sweat, and tears on it, too?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you. Bill will pass that. Thank you.
They were coming that way. Come on in, Kevin.
What's that?
You want one?
No, I'm good, I've seen it.
Yeah, just checking.
Thank you, though.
Oh, no problem.
And we started this whole process after we got done with town council, and meeting after meeting after meeting. EDC finally sat down, proposed this zoning bylaw amendment, which was what you see in the present form, but it had BA for Zoning Board of Appeals as the special permit granting authority. We passed it on to the Board of Selectmen the next night, June 23rd. They passed it on to the planning board for their public hearing on the July 15th. Prior to that, Bill and I made sure we had all the newspaper articles, all the adjacent towns were notified, and we went strictly by this document. This document by the Department of Housing and Community Development, it outlines how a town amends a zoning bylaw, and we followed this to the T. So now it's in the hands of the planning board on July 15th. They opened up the public hearing. That day, we also got an email from Pam on stating that's the first time she heard of it. I believe in transparency. I apologize for not advising this board earlier. We weren't required to, but you did on the next one. I did send a courtesy email on the next one. On Wednesday, July 15th, the planning board continued the public hearing. Their only recommendation was to change the special permit granting authority from zoning board to planning board.
I have a question on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just curious, what was that decision for? Wouldn't typically the, because it's land use, go through the zoning board?
That's a question for them. I was kind of taken by surprise that it went that way. We were expecting that to go through with no resistance, and it hit resistance. So I'll just leave it at that.
Well, no, I don't think it was resistance. I think they agree with the concept. They just thought there was a streamlined process, in the event that site plan review did get triggered, then they could be both site plan review and special permit granting authority, and have one-stop shopping.
Yeah, they mentioned one-stop shopping, and--
I think we've done that. We purposely changed some things--
Like the drive-through window.
That's correct. And, and I mean, it makes total sense, you know, to shift, shift the special permit authority to the planning board when there's so much more that they have to do.
So the easiest thing to do there was to just start the whole process over and do another public notice, advertising for another public hearing, just change the wording from zoning board to planning board in two places, the exact same proposal. EDC had a special meeting, passed it on to the selectmen, because now we're running out of time. Time is critical right now to get this on the town warrant for the September--
Why, what's coming in?
Tune in Tuesday, selectman meeting, there was an announcement.
I've had an invitation to do that a couple of days ago.
It would have been last night, but the Finance Board took away the--
Preempted.
They did a joint meeting with the Finance Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee on Monday night.
Yeah.
So now we pushed this announcement to next Tuesday.
Just timing, it's not a lot of time.
No, there isn't a lot of time. You have publications, you've got finance recommends, and right now, we're running it down to the wire to get this on the town warrant. So tomorrow night is the night, the planning board, public hearing, and I believe what the planning board will do is open up both hearings, the continued hearing and the new hearing, get comments, get input, make a, close the hearings and make a decision.
How are people gonna give input when they don't know what they're talking about? This is not making any sense to me and my little pea brain.
All you need to know is this is a bylaw amendment to go inside and outside a building.
Okay.
We're not addressing a specific project.
That's true.
So it's not allowed by right, and so, so there is a process to vet a proposal, regardless of the proposal.
Right.
And it could be approved, or it could be denied. If the planning board finds it unattractive to the town, or they find out that, you know, there's too many negatives than positives, they could deny it. And as a special permit, it's not, the applicant's not entitled to it. And it's a supermajority vote, you know, all of that.
Yeah, this is not a specific project. This is for all projects.
In the future.
In the future.
But it was generated for a specific--
It was triggered by something.
Well, you know, just to be honest, that's all. If it wasn't, you wouldn't be here, because as you said at the beginning of your, of your statement--
Boy, playing on coming through sooner or later with a cowwash. The same thing with a cowwash. We have nothing to do with cowwash. I have a cowwash business approached us several months ago. They're not in this book anywhere. They're not by right.
Probably should have got it on the town warrant for zoning change.
Thought there's only so many hours in the day.
Apparently, because we'll get this the day before tomorrow's meeting. But that's okay.
But that will be coming up sooner or later. I looked at all these other towns. Every town specifically lists cowwash. Douglas, nothing. We have a few spots that would be perfect for cowwashes. We don't have any. We have water sewer there, no cowwash. Be a great revenue producer for the town.
Can I ask you, will tomorrow night's meeting be televised?
On cable.
Right on cable?
Yes, it'll be both on YouTube and Avaya.
Okay, so, so people--
Not on the Douglas cable channel.
Oh, I have no idea about that. Pat, do you know that?
If it's on Avaya, it's on cable.
Which, what are you looking for?
Avaya will be on cable also tomorrow night.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Was I under the assumption that you're getting pushback from the planning board in regards to this?
Uh, no, no. Their only recommendation was the change, the original version, which had zoning board, to change it to planning board for one-stop shopping.
Well, there was some discussion, actually, to broaden the scope and allow it by special permits in other districts, and, you know, Bob and I were making arguments, so let's, let's take that as step two. Let's focus on this as step one.
Yeah. Several people asked if we could include it, special permit, in a commercial zone, and I said, "We have had zero activity in commercial zones." And if you look at a zoning map, there's only four areas of commercial zone. One on the Webster Line, one, the big one is at the schools, which you will have no activity there next to a school, other than maybe a solar farm. And the other two commercial districts, there's a big one on Gilboa Street, which is no activity there. We've had zero activity for commercial, so why would you invite abutters to a commercial area to possibly have negative nay votes? So we just wanted to keep it simple, baby steps. If, if it comes to the point where we get activity for commercial, we'll run another zoning bylaw amendment change to include the commercial district, but right now, let's just keep it simple at industrial.
Where were we, July 15th? Did you get through this?
No, you went through 20, you went to 21.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 16 to 21 is when we had the discussions.
Yeah.
21 is when I sent Chairman Dan Heaney a courtesy zoning bylaw amendment. That would be the revision to the proposed, the original proposed. The rest is just telegram, newspaper, legal notices. The Board of Selectmen meeting was August 12th, and, I'm sorry, the zoning board is tonight, and tomorrow will be the planning board. I looked at other towns, I looked at three basic areas in all these town zoning bylaws. I looked at manufacturing, I looked at wholesale warehouse, and I looked at cowwash. Every town pretty much has wholesale warehouse, period, that's it. Two words. Douglas has wholesale warehouse, distribution or storage facility, comma, including storage warehouse. So--
Ever at all.
I guess we did. We just seem to complicate things. We have a big line item on most of our items, and other towns have two words, wholesale, distribution facility.
It depends on who was making the motion. If you go back and you look at the motion that Mitch Bone, Mitch Cohen made for the sign bylaw, that's complicated. I don't know if anybody remembers when he did that, whizzes and all this other stuff that he kind of animated when he was, when he was saying it.
Yeah.
Just say you don't want electronic sign, just cut it down to that. So I get that this is, this is just a courtesy to come by and tell us, because it's under discussion, there's no vote needed by us.
Right, there's no vote needed by you on--
Personally, the frustration that comes out during the process is not being included in any part of it, to get some input from us, which would be helpful for you, because where we start looking at it, we're the last stop when somebody's trying to appeal it. That's what our board does. So we should have some input as to help you a little bit with the process. That's why I'm asking you the different questions that I'm asking, that's why I'm making the statement saying, "The way I read this, it's already allowed, what are we changing?" I still stand by that, because of that comma that's in there. If that comma wasn't in there, then I would be, "All right, you're inside a building. It says any manufacturing use, comma," and then it goes on to the other description. So we're in agreement in that.
Yes.
But just as you go forward with other zoning proposals or changes, it may be helpful for you to include us into it, to help you through that process, and then, whether it's me by myself or other members, don't get frustrated through this. You've got 24 hours, let's go.
And I do have that down. In the future, zoning board involved, or at least notified, upcoming zoning board, zoning bylaw amendments.
You sent Dan the email on the 21st of July. We met before that.
Yeah.
So there's no way that we would have it. Maria's not even in, so it's gotta go from him to Maria circulated through us. You can't send it to us, it's in violation of the open meeting law. So in all fairness, we didn't get notified, as the chairman did, but--
Because I kind of look at it as, the Finance Committee, again, I've got experience there, acts as sort of a, when we, when we see information coming to the, from the town to the residents, we're a good compilation of people, it kind of gives you an idea of the questions that are gonna come up, what people are gonna complain about, how things are gonna, you know? So, so, so you can amend your thought process and go, "Oh, I didn't think of that," you know? The more, the merrier, almost.
Oh, I firmly believe in that. The more input you have, the better decision you can make.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be necessary for all of us to attend all of them, and have another member that would like to go, or two members--
A liaison.
Yeah, and have them come back to us after and discuss it at a meeting.
Good idea.
So rather than have them two meetings together, because we'd have to--
Yeah.
So--
Well, just to be notified--
No, true, but I, and you're right, you're right, Mike, because it's, it's something that, in the very end, if we don't have, if they ask us a question, we, we didn't write this, somebody else did. Did we think of that question before? And of course, and we didn't, because we had nothing to do with it. I just, I would just like to see some outreach to us, that's all. You know, I don't object outside of the comma. I read it the same way, but other than that, I'm happy, it just, this is good, just curious on what's going on, that's all.
So I can say, you know, we have followed the proper procedure as defined by statute. You know, over the 20 years I've been here, this is the first time I'm hearing this kind of feedback, and I'm certainly happy to forward any kind of new zoning bylaws to the board for your input or consideration. That's simple. We have to notify other towns, regional planning agencies, we have to notify a whole slew of people. Adding your board is really not difficult.
And if the board should stop on what the intent of the change was, because there's still a possibility that if somebody's denied or approved a special permit, it's nothing saying an abutter can't appeal it--
Right.
--to the board, or if someone's denied a special permit, the applicant's denied, technically, they could come here to appeal their denial.
Right, and that was another thing the planning board brought up, was not only the one-stop shopping, but if they issued a special permit, and it needed to be appealed, they've got you to keep it in town.
Right, before it goes to court.
If you issued it, then there's no appeal process left for in town. It goes to court.
Right.
So to keep it in town was another reason the planning board suggested, or made the recommendation, that they would be the special permit granting authority.
And that makes a lot of sense. The bill's statement is saying that they've never included this in the past. My only comment to that is, if the zoning enforcement officer, as well as the zoning board, is involved in the process of suggesting this change before it goes to the board, it gets everybody on the same page, everybody has their input, because now, if we don't know anything about it, have any input into it, we may not agree with what you came up with the SAWA, or Mark, or the zoning agent at that time, may not. So, so there's conflict, but if we work together as a team, as a group effort, we can come to the same conclusion that you came to. And I think we're there, and I'm just saying, in the future changes, that this may be more beneficial to you.
Would you suggest attending an EDC meeting when we make the initial proposal, to get input and kind of mold it? But let's, let's take cowwash, that will be coming up. Do you, would you want to get involved in the process?
Yeah, you're not talking about this, you're talking about other ones.
Right, the next one. This one's pretty much, this one's water over the dam.
I would want to have some input into it, but I don't think as a, I should do it as an individual if going--
Yeah, we could just have to be presented to the EBA.
--a joint meeting with zoning, or--
I mean, we could, we could do an EDC joint meeting. Our meetings are pretty flexible, your meetings are--
Have the zoning enforcement agent here at the same time, because he's typically here at our meetings anyways.
Yeah, as long as we don't complicate cowwash, including Dodge, Chevy, Ford, you know? And God forbid you come up with a Mercedes and it's not listed.
You can't make a list of all of them, this gentleman. And adding that word A-N-D--
Yeah.
Yeah.
Solidifies that everything is on.
Yeah.
I'm gonna run, comma, jump, comma, skip, comma, and squat.
So my suggestion is to come up with your comments and have, have our legal counsel put commas, or ends, or buts, or ifs in there, if that's what he chooses to do.
So are you suggesting we should have a grammar teacher on-- So are you suggesting we should have a grammar teacher on call as opposed to counsel?
My English teacher agreed with me and disagreed with town council. But she... We want to keep it in town, Mark. So in the future, we'll make this a little more transparent and try to get some lead times, not wait till the last minute. This one, because of the planning board continuing the last meeting, kind of boxed me in because I need to get this on the warrant. This is all part of the project that's being announced Tuesday.
So I have a question about what is your position on the EDC currently?
Co-chairman.
Are you co-chair? I thought I'd heard that. At the meeting on Monday, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen indicated that the town is in need of business, and we are in need of business.
That was made loud and clear at the Prop 2 and 1/2 override meeting.
Override, yeah. And we've been aware of that. We've needed businesses in town for a very long time, and I've been somewhat active up until the point where you realize that Douglas is on a waiting list, and businesses are moving west. They moved to 495, to 128, then to 495 in Franklin area and all, you know, they're busy, busy over there, and they are moving slowly this way. I guess what I would hate to have happen is a desperation movement. Douglas likes what it is. Douglas is a residential town that needs business. We do not need any business. Back in 1993, the Board of Selectmen also were in desperation mode, and they signed a document that sold property to a person who was going to bring in a large dump. You remember those days? I think you were here.
I lived in Webster at that time. I remember it clearly.
So I personally was active in that, and then I was active after that in the airport problem that we had. We were going to be an airport, which would have decimated the town. I think everybody knows that.
Bob might have something to do with that either.
Some of the people that...
That was my brother. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Actually, I think Hal Davis, I think his property was a run, one of the runways, I think, to the airport.
I was sick of that four-hour drive to Newark.
The whole town would have been decimated. So I guess, I just, I would hope, and I'm praying, that the EDC keeps in mind that the town of Douglas, while it needs additional funds, is not desperate to the point that anything goes.
That's kind of my line of thinking because this project that will be announced Tuesday, when it's complete, you won't even see it. If you drive by it, you won't even know it's there. Hopefully, your tax bill will though.
Trying to bait you into asking, but he's not going to tie you into...
Not taking it.
We'll get him outside after.
Thank you. That's really, that makes me happy.
It's not my position to announce any development.
I understand. You're getting close, though. Right around a piece of paper.
So the other thing we, you know, that was going to come to Douglas was a horse track, a racehorse track.
Yeah.
And that was probably, I'm going to say, I was probably 16, 17 then.
Yeah, but that's all they had was horses.
Stagecoach. 16 wasn't even there yet.
Well, Webster Road was dirt.
Yeah.
Were they going to use that as the racetrack?
Yeah, yeah. So, but anyway. In your point, we want something, of course, that's worthy of the town. I give you, for instance, I was with company this past weekend, and one of the guys I was with just retired from CVS, one of the big engineers. And I said to him, that would be great for Douglas having a CVS here, but again, we only have 8,500 people. And he says, I'm sure they'd be happy to. And I says, I think we already asked them, and they denied it because we didn't have 10,000 at the time. And I was probably, and I think when I was a selectman in town, we asked numerous people from Walgreens to CVS, all, you know? Because of the Gilbo Street, it's so close to 146, you know? They're now looking at 18,000, 20,000 people for a population for commercial if you're going to do something like a CVS where people have to go to it. Because you have to, your town has to dedicate itself to them if you...
Yeah, we've looked at CVS, we've looked at Walgreens, Rite Aid, part of Walgreens now. There's a couple of smaller ones that might come in, but it's true. We don't have a drug store.
How about Lynch's?
We had a drug store.
We don't have natural gas. I mean, our infrastructure needs to be built up before we can start attracting industry.
We only have pipelines. We don't have natural gas, usable natural gas.
We have dead pipelines. We have a transmission line.
Yeah.
And for you, at one zoning board meeting, somebody asked you, what was the size of that pipeline? I can tell you, it's a 20-inch pressurized pipeline pressured to 700 PSI.
Okay.
For your knowledge.
Thank you. We ought to invite him to the ZBA meetings, isn't that?
It's that useless information that's all stuck up here, isn't it, Bob?
I've talked to the companies.
Unfortunately, some of those things, we're just plain Mr. Bone.
Yeah.
CVS is one of them because I personally had discussions with them.
Yeah.
And they were surrounded by CVSs. Every surrounding town has a CVS.
Right, and they would not put one in because it would dilute the others.
It services us.
The Webster, Oxbridge, Oxford. They already have our people going there.
That's correct.
I go to the Webster one. So they already have our business.
They do.
What you need to do is get another, a brand name in, a Walgreens maybe. But their thought process is, we already have the Douglas people coming here, the ones we want.
Yeah.
So do we do, what, is it Costco? There's another, I know there's a Rite Aid. We've got a few of the guys looking at different companies. But maybe it's in combination with a 55 and over community. Now it makes a drug store attractive because those people need, I don't want to use the word medication. I don't want to use the word drugs.
We could always ask the state, give up some land on Route 16 and on the Webster Road.
Yes, we could. We do have some land available.
We're not going to pull a lot of money out of them, so...
Yeah, they own a third of us.
Yeah.
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 I point that out to Charlie Baker as much as I can.
Which straps us.
Yeah. That.
But we're looking for clean industry. We're not looking for a nuclear waste disposal building, put it that way. We're looking for clean buildings.
No pig farms.
I haven't talked to any pig farmers lately. Solar is clean. Areas that are already cleared, we're looking at areas to develop. So you're not changing the landscape of Douglas. We've got, when Carol and I put together the 185 Assembly behind Granit Tech, we actually met with some of the people on West Street in Oxbridge. Didn't have to, but we did just to be good neighbors. I asked one gentleman, what was his wish list? And he says, I'd like to see a large cannabis greenhouse going. I said, what's your second one? He said solar. I said, what's the thing you don't want in there? And he says, I don't want a warehouse in there. Well, we don't have any warehouses planned for that.
Yeah.
Because of the truck noise, the lights, diesel fumes. If you do put one in, you want to keep it off to the side.
I'm not sure how much Route 16 can support traffic-wise.
Probably not much, but 146 will.
Yes, it will. And so will 395.
And Campanelli is getting well-established, Campanelli and Oxbridge.
Yeah. They don't use it to do in park, right? What else is going in there? Anything?
Well, Medline, Medline has an 800,000 square foot facility, warehouse.
And they're, what are they doing?
Medical supplies.
Medical supplies.
Okay, yeah.
And we've been informed that they've already outgrown the building. They're looking for up to a 2 million square foot footprint somewhere. Because of COVID-19, you just can't stockpile supplies anymore. There's such a demand for stockpiling supplies. They're 800,000 square foot buildings, they're already outgrown, haven't even been in there a couple of months.
Yep.
And I think they just bought the third piece of property. Cannabis grow facility is the middle piece. There was the third piece, and I think Medline just bought that to build another 500,000 square foot warehouse. So this area is hot. Serendipity, that's, that was in this morning's paper, all the notifications, the public notices.
Oh, I didn't see it.
Two-week notices for all the zoning law changes. And I believe that's Amazon. Rumor has it it's Amazon.
That's what I heard.
You did too.
Which are second.
That seems to be the word. What was it?
550,000 square foot Amazon building.
Yeah. Which to them is small.
Yeah.
That's small.
Yeah, but they'll put three of them within 10 miles of each other.
My buddy in Chautauqua said there's one going in there, 600,000 in Chautauqua, Amazon. Now, to get a size of these numbers, BJ's is 630, 630,000, and that's a big building.
Down in Oxbridge?
Yes.
630?
630,000.
What kind of revenue does that kind of building bring in, Bob?
We looked at it. When it was initially built, it was valued at 40 million, then 20 years ago. If that sized building came here right now, we'd be looking at probably $600,000 in tax revenue, just on the property value. Because our rate is, what, 16, $16 and change?
Code 17.
That's half of the last override. We've been here two and a half.
You're learning. We're fast learners, but you're younger than I am. I can only fit so many penguins on this iceberg. And this iceberg is melting.
Anybody else have anything to add?
No.
Had a nice conversation.
So if you have any questions, the public hearing is tomorrow, 7 o'clock. Any comments? We just, I just need harmony going into the town warrant, the September 12 meeting amongst all the boards. I mean, we've all got to be rowing in the same direction to get this industry coming in. And I think once the first project's done, we'll be coming through with a couple more. They'll be just following in.
Good. Great, we appreciate you coming in.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
So who makes the motion to adjourn me?
Oh, you've been around too long. You know...
This is an EDC, this is still zoning.
Are there any questions?
No, I'm good, man.
No, just a commenting.
Other than before Tuesday night.
All right, great. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so what are we doing?
So we get us the minutes?
Yeah.
We have the minutes of June 10th.
You have the minutes and you have this application.
Right, yeah.
I'll just stick around to the end. Down to minutes, right?
Sure.
If you don't mind.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 10th as presented.
Hey, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to approve the June 10th minutes as printed. We have a second?
A second.
Second by Mara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the minutes of June 10th? Yes, we do. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Oh, that's right. Aye, Pam Holmes.
Aye, John Mulberry.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay. All right, we have the minutes of July 8th.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of July 8th as presented.
We have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to approve the minutes of July 8th as presented. We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Dan Heaney, aye.
Epstein, John Mulberry.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay, minutes are approved as written. Last, hang on.
You don't know, Bill, if we've gotten any, since Maria's not here, I'll just pretend that you know what in Maria's mind. Do you know whether we've ever gotten any, were we going to get a certified plot plan for Mrs. Laramie?
Yeah, that was on her to-do list. She was going to look in her files to see if she could get that.
Okay, all right.
I can remind her.
Yeah, I just didn't know. No, no, I'm talking about Mrs. Laramie.
Old Colony, right.
No.
No.
Talking to Hoff Road.
Oh, Hoff Road.
Mrs. Laramie.
How was that hearing left?
I guess she's coming back in a couple of months. Two months, right.
We have not received...
Boo?
Any information.
Okay. But yes, it's Mrs. Sullivan, and it's in this, the minutes about Mrs. Sullivan, or Ms. Sullivan.
Right.
Had the copy of the plans for Old Colony. Yeah, it's just good to tie those things up.
Yeah, and I had also asked that there was the copies of the information for Laramie we put in our packet for that meeting. It's in the minutes.
Yeah.
There was a copy of the plan?
No, information for the 2004 place and the information. And so I'm assuming that what I was looking for was, I'm thinking maybe the information, copy of the information from Conservation, because she says in, let me see what it was. So it was in the previous meeting.
Yeah, it's here on the June 10th, page 2 at the bottom.
Yeah. Yeah, so I had a last paragraph. I asked why the roof wasn't, is not shortened away from the line. She said Laramie responded, it looked better that way, and otherwise it would be closer to the brook. She said Conservation approval, Commission approved the plan as long as it did not make the roof or the banner any larger than it existed. So there must be something on that if she got that determination.
Okay.
And also there's something in there about the planning board saying that they... And also, there's something in there about the Planning Board saying that they, as long as it didn't go any closer to the rear, which the rear would be the lake. But that's a statement that was made, so there must be something on the Planning Board as well.
No, the Planning Board had it. As you know, they comment on applications and provide feedback to the board.
Yep, so just a copy on that, that's all.
But, but they didn't have a plan, so that was the only comment.
Right. No information?
She didn't submit a plan, but that's the way.
But that was put on, that was put on their sheet that they had asked.
That's all the Planning Board said was, "It's confusing." This is my recollection.
Yeah, no, but it was on the sheet.
It was put on the sheet.
Yeah, so just a copy of that.
Oh, that.
Yeah, just so we're not, he shared, she, he said, he shared all this stuff at the meeting, because that's what we're doing, is going in circles. So, that's why I requested to have the backup information so we're accurate in what we're talking.
Is that in voice down there, John? See if it's in voice? And the last item we had tonight was the town received a, I guess you'd call it an application for someone looking to fill a vacancy on this board. It's been vacant for quite some time. So, the Board of Selectmen was looking for a recommendation. I think Mr. Forge has been on every board that's in his town since, in his life. He's been on zoning, he's been a selectman.
Since Christ was a corporal.
Yeah, yes. So, I, I think it'd be great for the board.
Yeah, the only thing that I see on here is he checked our full member. We have an open associate spot, which is always a good place for...
Starter.
New people to start, just to get familiarized with the board before they get...
Yeah, that makes sense.
...place under something. And the only other thing that I seen on here is number 10, "How many times during the last year have you attended a meeting at the board?" He said, "Only watched on TV." I believe he came to at least one meeting, maybe two.
Yeah, I think last year, about a year ago.
Exactly.
Other than that, we need, we need to fill that vacancy.
Yeah, it's been vacant for a long time. I agree.
I mean, I think Ronnie is looking for the best interests of the town of Douglas is, and perhaps, you know, understanding the, the reason for zoning will encourage people.
All right, well, I'll, I'll let Suzanne know that the board, I guess maybe we need to, maybe we should take a vote.
Yeah. I'll move that we recommend Ron Forge to the zoning board for a alternate position.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to recommend the appointment of Mr. Forge as an alternate member to the CBA. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Roll call.
Dan Heaney, aye.
Pam Holmes, aye.
John Mombauer, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay. All right, we don't have any other agenda items tonight if somebody...
Can I make a motion to call this to...
Sure, why not?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I thought it was going to be a surprise. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mombauer to adjourn and seconded by Mrs. Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Dan Heaney.
Pam Holmes, aye.
Mombauer, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 8:18.